That has an audible or mobile device, please turn it off for silence so that doesn't interrupt the proceedings of the meeting. We're going to dispense with the reading of policies and procedures on participation in a public meeting, but you can find a copy of those rules just outside the door in the lobby there if you'd like to take one. This time I would ask the Planning Commission, if you've had a chance to review the minutes from the previous session of this body, and if so, do you have any concerns, edits, comments? Hearing nine, I will entertain a motion with regard to the minutes from the previous session of the Planning Commission.
Micro motion would approve the minutes of previous Planning Commission.
Have a motion to approve from Mr. Leggett, a second from Mr. Stokes, all in favor. Motion passes four, zero, and one. I would remind everyone that this is a recommending body, meaning that the applications that come before it will be heard and a recommendation will be made by the Planning Commission to the legal body that would be considering this for its final dispensation. If it's going to the Board of Commissioners, that would be heard tonight at 7:00 PM by the Board of Commissioners. If it's going to the City of Hiram, it will be forwarded to the City of Hiram and you will need to check with them to see what date it will be advertised and heard there. Opposition, or the applicant will have 15 minutes to make a presentation on their behalf of the application. It includes anybody who may wish to speak on behalf of the application. They may use all of that time or reserve some for rebuttal if need be. Opposition will be granted 15 minutes for comment, and that would be anything with questions, comments, or concerns, or just opposition to the application. Would ask that all comments be directed to the Chair, and the Chair is me. Any questions that you may have, I will take those down, and if I feel it's warranted, we will seek an answer for that. At this time, also, all applicants will have to be present in order for the application to be heard. So at this time, I'd ask Mr. Robinson if you have the first application ready.
Good afternoon, ready to go.
Thank you.
First application is 2018-01-LUP, City of Hiram. Application by Janet S. McMillan for a land use permit on approximately 1.073 acres for dwelling purposes at a business site. Property is located in Land Lot 681, District 2, Section 3. It's on the west side of Hiram-Douglasville Highway, south of Simms Drive, it's in Commission Post 3. Again, it's in the city. This is actually a renewal from two years ago of LUP that was approved by the city. And if it's approved, staff is recommending one stipulation. We have had one call in opposition. That is noted, and the applicant's representative is present.
All right, the applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and then address your comments to the Chair.
I got it.
One more point of business, any questions from the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners to either the applicant or anybody who makes a presentation at the lectern does not count against their time, so didn't want there to be a question about that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, hi. My name is Edwin Cecarelli, I'm an attorney in Marietta. I am here on behalf of the owner of this property, Janet McMillan. The property is at 590 Hiram-Douglasville Highway in the City of Hiram. The property comprises approximately one acre. The structure on it consists of a modified residential dwelling containing approximately 1,500 square feet. The zoning classification of this property is low-rise office. We are here seeking approval for this property in a commercially zoned location to be used as a residence by the owner. The property was acquired by this owner in 2015. Substantial improvements that were mandated by the county as a condition of the zoning prior to 2015 were made by this owner, including upgraded access, driveway, entrance, handicap access. The owner is conducting a business on this property which is properly permitted. The owner began operating the business in 2015, and at that time she was commuting from her parents' house in Smyrna. 2016, the owner applied to this body and the City of Hiram for a land use permit to allow her to reside on the property. Regulations require that a land use permit of this nature is only good for two years, and so what we are doing in effect, as Mr. Robinson pointed out, is requesting a renewal or extension. We are not talking about the business itself. The business itself is properly permitted, we are only talking about the owner's residence on the property. As to the use of the property, there is plenty of parking, there are no non-related employees, very limited deliveries to this property, and it is certainly not the type of business that generates much noise. The hours of the business itself are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 8, and they're closed on Sunday. To my knowledge, nothing has transpired to disqualify the owner from continuing to reside on the property, and we are here respectfully requesting approval for another two years. And I'll reserve any other time in case of a need for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cecarelli. Is there anyone on the Planning Commission that may have questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative? And they understand the one stipulation that's listed and agreeable to that.
The two years, yes.
Well, that it is not transferable from one owner to another in case the property ever sells.
Oh, absolutely. That's, I think that's in the regulations, yes.
Any questions for the applicant? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that wish to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing nine, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2018-01-LUP for the City of Hiram.
A motion to be approved with the one stipulation.
Have a motion to approve with the one listed stipulation by Ms. Battle. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Low, all in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. And again, this will be forwarded to the City of Hiram for them to determine the most appropriate hearing for this application. Mr. Robinson?
Next application, 2018-12Z, application by Artisan Storage Inc., Fred Rickman, to resound approximately 14.40 acres from Agricultural District to I-1 Light Industrial for purposes of constructing a self-storage facility on the property. Property is located in Land Lot 1048, District 2, Section 3. It's on the south side of Pine Valley Road, east side of Hiram-Douglasville Highway. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval with 16 stipulations, and we want to go ahead and note for the record, there's anticipated discussion on stipulation number nine, number 10, and number And we have had no noted opposition on this application. The applicants are present.
Can you elaborate on the extent of the conversation on nine, 10, and 14?
Those are water system stipulations, I believe that they may be aware of, or maybe possibly some rewording and such, and that's to my understanding.
Are we in a position where we're prepared to move forward and allow you to address that after this meeting with the applicant? Is that what we're talking about?
I would, I would think that we would be at the situation here with the recommendation or not, that we would need that clarified a little better at this point.
All right. Is the applicant present? Yes, Ms. Ashmore.
Mr. Chairman, the water system is only aware of a, of an issue, or I am only aware of an issue and able to address number 14.
Okay. And is the applicant present? Yes, sir. If you would, please come in, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
My name is Fred Rickman, I represent Artisan Storage and also the Storage Extra Facility that is located next door to this property. To clarify some of the other, earlier discussion, items nine and 10 are not an issue for us. So the only issue that we would propose a change to is item 14, and only to the extent of the self-storage facility that we would want to construct here, which is on the back part of the property. Since the self-storage does not require sewer, we feel like we should be able to go ahead and get a building permit to do the self-storage, but we would agree to the stipulation that we could not build the office warehouse until, until the sewer is delivered to the property.
So you're agreeable to taking action on item 14, once you build the office for the facility?
We would agree to 14 for the office warehouse part, but we would want to be able to get a building permit. We have no immediate plans to build the office warehouse at this point in time. Our immediate plans are to build the self-storage part, of which we own the facility next door to this property.
Okay, continue, and we'll, we'll address that in just a moment.
That's all I have to say about the project. I'd be willing to address any questions and reserve my time if there's any rebuttal.
My common first question is just to re-elaborate on stipulations one through 16. You're in agree, in agreement with all of those with a possible modification to number 14?
That's true.
All right. Well, then on that matter, I will ask Ms. Ashmore, are you prepared to address his comment as to whether or not that's agreeable to the Water and Sewer Department?
It is agreeable, and I have some suggested language for you, that the owner developer acknowledges that no building permits for any wastewater generating buildings will be issued until such time, and then continue the remainder of the paragraph.
Can I just clarify that suppose we wanted to put a leasing office there that had two sinks and two bathrooms with a septic, that would or would not be allowable?
That would not be allowable.
Okay, so the only, we have to keep it all self-storage buildings with no plumbing?
That's correct.
Okay, that will work because we hope to tie in, we plan to tie in the two facilities since we own the one next door, and not require a, any kind of plumbing at this time for the self-storage.
Do you by any chance have that language where you could offer it to one of our, whoever's going to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
We can make that available.
Is that language then agreeable to you?
It is agreeable.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ashmore. Is there any other questions for the applicant from the Planning Commission?
So this is specifically going to be a contiguous property, 22 properties, it won't, Mr. Robinson, won't be in need for a buffer on the south side of the property, is that right?
That's, that's correct. The only buffer would be to the rear, and it would be a 50-foot buffer.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners?
Plating made progress in number 13, please.
Ms. Ashmore, I will defer that to you.
Should this be developed as something other than a self-storage facility, that a grease trap would be required on a restaurant or food service establishment?
Mr. Carmichael, does that answer your question?
It does, I just don't see why these developers should have to do it.
No, it is limited to food service, or, and these developers in particular are not, but it, it is also only being, it is being done for an I-1, and it's just if there was an auto shop or there was a restaurant in that, they would be required, he would not be required to do that for a self-storage.
Because the language specifically designates food preparation or auto repair?
Correct, yes.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anybody that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Tom and Mary Joe Benson were the residential on the east side, and we have a few concerns as to the storage facility going in. Given that I did not know that the applicant also owned the one just south, why do we need another one then? If he owns all that property, why can't he just expand? If he is a budding on that south side, and, and push a little forward if he wants to add more, but, I mean, I'm not against development, helps with the taxes, but it's, you know, we moved to that property next door to have some privacy and to have, have a little freedom, and, and this is where he's wanting to put the buildings is, you know, a little close. It's just a little disheartening to see that, but progress is progress. I would like to know, given some of these stipulations, has there been a traffic study done because you're requiring right and left turn lanes here on Pine Valley? And Pine Valley is already busy enough with traffic, and this is only going to add to I mean, we, we have our property fenced to keep our grandkids in, you know, and I'm sure we can all kind of relate to that one a little bit, but yeah, there's just, there is just a ton of traffic, a ton of noise going up and down there, and this is only going to add to it. When we first moved in, our neighbor across the street asked me, "How do you like the noise?"
It's not bad during the day, but during the, like, people going to work, school, coming back, that's when it gets, I, we don't even leave the house at 4:00 because it's hard to get out, they've got that stoplight there. So, oh, we're just, we're just here.
All right.
You know, and given the, last time, I'm not sure, this applicant has owned that property all along, but, you know, it wouldn't perk the last time, and putting in all this, you know, and especially with the creek back there, that's going to have a serious impact on our property next door.
Yeah, concern about the drainage.
Because we've had a three-foot river in our front yard already once this year. And, you know, it just, that part really concerns me. I, I guess that's about it, you know.
We just moved here for our grandbaby.
Well, I can appreciate that. Let me, let me start by this, just, the purpose of the meeting and the purpose of this board is to determine the appropriateness of the proposed use of property. There are other stages that the developer of this property will also have to go through, assuming that he gets a favorable response from the local authority, which is your Paulding County Board of Commissioners. Drainage, you mentioned, is something that will have to be taken into consideration in plan review, and you have the departments represented up here in the front, for all the departments of Paulding, that will be considering that in the application of the rules regarding stormwater runoff, so that it doesn't or impact you as much or as little as possible, because they're supposed to contain stormwater, the rainwater that lands on their property by definition is supposed to stay on their property. And they're going to, through the plan review process, will take a look at that to make sure that what is built, what is permitted, what will be inspected, and what will ultimately be issued a certificate of occupancy has met and is compliant with those rules and requirements. That's not done here, that is done if they get a favorable response through the Board of Commissioners to proceed with this use. The percolation on the property, I think, is one of the reasons that it falls within the, I think it's the Sweetwater Sewer Basin, is that correct, or is that the?
This is the Sweetwater Basin.
And, and that is the reason that we had that discussion at the outset, that any wastewater-producing activity on the property is going to require them to connect to sewer. So the percolation becomes moot, really, at that point. Ms. Ashmore, you can jump in and correct me anytime you want. And as far as the traffic study, that is a DOT Highway 4, Highway 92, but I will ask Mr. Jones right here, he's the Director of the DOT, if he can elaborate on any impact to Pine Valley or surrounding roads.
Let me just start off by saying, Jody, I think there was some questions about the comments for a left and right turn lane.
Yes.
That's in our development regulation, so it's covered under, under our development regulations, but sometimes we like to put it out there so the developer knows what's coming and they're not surprised. So basically, any arterial or collector road, Pine Valley is considered a collector road, is required to have a left and a right turn lane installed. There's 4,600 cars a day on that section of Pine Valley. I'm not saying that's not a little amount, but typically, two-lane roads, we're looking at capacity of 14,000 cars a day. So I understand your concerns that there, it is a-
I think it's, a lot is the speed also, because when you're afraid to go to the mailbox, so if you could put that into consideration.
And also, there's a state project that's going on right now at Highway 92, and they're going to tie in, obviously, to the Pine Valley, so this development will have to obviously coordinate with that to make sure that the signal, storage lanes, and all that are not compromised.
So we're, we're all set, we can plant trees to try and absorb some noise before-
Well, there will also be a requirement, depending on the adjacent properties and the zoning of those properties, and Mr. Robinson can probably point that out to you, as to where they're required to keep a buffer. Now, again, that's going to be handled mostly through plan review, but it is already in the ordinances for Paulding County requiring such whenever you have a difference of zoning between properties. I'm not, you said yours is east of that location?
Yep, we're right east.
Is that something that you were able to address, Chris, as to what, the disparity of zoning between those two?
We're on the first driveway on Pine Valley.
On the right. Yeah.
Right. I gotta see where I'm at. 92, yep, this is us right here, yep. That's us right there.
Yeah.
Yep.
So am I correct in saying that there would be a requirement for a buffer along that property line?
That is correct, undisturbed or replanted where it's necessary of 50 feet.
Okay, so there, there are concerns that are addressed within the ordinances adopted by the county for that specific problem that you see? So hopefully it's not going to be as, as bad as you may have thought that it's going to be? And I'm not, that's not prejudicing the decision of this board, nothing's been decided yet, but there are precautions and safeguards in place specifically for situations like this.
Okay, and then any, any of the trees in the future, if they die and fall over, they'll take care of those?
They're required to maintain a buffer, so that would be dependent upon inspection based on a complaint at that time.
Okay, okay. I guess we're good?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody else that has any opposition to this application that may want to speak? Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, if the applicant will please step back around. And you had some time remaining, if you would like to use that, but for the most part, I think we've addressed most of the concerns, but you can please add to anything that was said, and also, well, the one question is, why do we need another one? But that's really dependent upon the desire of the owner of the property, and whether or not it's appropriate under the comprehensive plan and the zone, and, and the future land use map for Paulding County, but if you would-
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to address the Bensons' concerns, the one I heard most that we might could do something about is the buffer. I think it can be undisturbed or disturbed and planted back. I would like to work with them to, to see what they would prefer. Right now, it's a lot of matted, you know, weeds and everything right there. They may prefer to see that taken out and a planted buffer come back in, or they may prefer to see, they prefer to see the existing stay. So what I'd like to do is, we're good neighbors, and we want to, we want to work with them to minimize the impact that our facility might have on their house, which they've lived in a long time. In terms of, our facility is over 90% rented, which is nice and successful. We'd love to expand on the existing land, but we've, we've built on all that we can, and therefore, that's why we're acquiring the land next door, assuming this is approved. And any other questions I could address?
You understand that they will address in plan review for your, your client or yourself the question about drainage, that you would be required to ensure that you're not impacting neighboring properties due to rainwater runoff?
Right, I understand that, right. And in fact, if you look at the plan, there, we've already done some preliminary testing that although there's not water running, what would, is labeled as a creek all the time, it's dry. Everything you see that's not built on will remain trees at that point, there'll be no disturbance there.
Okay.
And you also understand that you have a buffer requirement on that pipeline also, is that correct?
It's going, because of that creek, it's going to remain a buffer. I didn't understand that I have one there because we own the land to the south, but it's effectively going to be one.
Yeah, you, you'll have to deal with that, with the pipeline that separates the two properties there.
That's true.
Are there any other questions for the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, Mr. Crowe?
Benson's correct. Y'all, you, you made the statement that you're not opposing businesses, you're just wanting your quality of life protected, is that correct?
Yeah.
I don't know if this thing's on or not, but that was my concern, you know, you're saying, hey, we realize we need things to take care of a tax base, but at the same time, we want to protect our quality of life, right? Got you.
And our dear, and your dear, and your dear.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I will entertain a motion for application 2018-12-Z. Again, this is with the 16 listed stipulations with amended language for number 14. Do you want us to read that into the record?
Stipulation number fourteen revised, owner developer acknowledges that no building permits for any wastewater-generating building will be issued until such time the off-site infrastructure to be used to convey this development's wastewater has been constructed, inspected, and accepted.
Do I have a motion from the Planning Commission that mirrors that language and the listed stipulations?
Most approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Low.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Leggett, all in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. This will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Paulding Board of Commissioners, and the applicant must be present for it to be considered. If you have any interest in the application, I would suggest that you be present there as well. Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Chairman, could I be allowed to make two announcements on three of the remaining applications?
Three of them, sure.
I just wanted to emphasize that 2018-15Z application by Hakeem Demoney, H. Demoney Investment Group, was administratively forwarded to the November twenty-seventh Planning Commission meeting. Staff needs a little more discussion with this one, and also, at this time, we're, we would like to, staff is going to work with the applicant and forward application 2018-16Z, application by Cowboy Trail LLC, and 2018-05 S U P, which is associated with that rezoning. There needs to be a little more staff discussion on some of these stipulations. So, we would like to remove those at this time.
Call those out to me again, please, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
Call, call out the case numbers to me again, please.
It was 2018, I mean, 2018-16Z? And 2018-05 S U P.
Those have been forwarded?
Yes, and the one that had already been forwarded by staff was the 2018-15Z.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
And yet, we're on thirteen.
Application 2018-13Z, application by One Investment Ventures LLC, to rezon approximately five point six one acres from R2 Suburban Residential, to B2 General Business, for quality residential, retail development, that includes retail buildings, potential grocery slash convenience store, and a restaurant. Property is located in Land Lot 489, District Two, Section Three, north side of Hayren Row Drive, on the east side of Villareca Highway, it's in Commission Post Two, One. Staff has recommended approval with eleven stipulations. We have no noted opposition on this one, and the applicant is present.
If the applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission Chairman, my name is Marion Avis, and I represent the applicant for this proposed development. They are very experienced in quality retail development. We've worked on similar projects in Gwinnett and DeKalb, and other parts of North Atlanta, and they're very excited about some of the improvements that are being proposed along this corridor, and I've brought some examples, so that you can see some of the similar elevations that they've done, that would have a retail convenience store, restaurant-type mixture, and they are in agreement with the recommended conditions, including compliance with the highway corridor, corridor overlay, which would stipulate similar quality architecture, landscaping, setbacks, and, and those types of requirements. So, we'd ask for your recommendation for approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm starting to sound redundant, you are familiar with the eleven stipulations that are recommended by staff, and your client is agreeable to those?
We are, and yes, we're in agreement.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? Thank you very much, Ms. Avis.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to this application? If you would please come around, sign in, state your name, address your comments to the Chair.
Good afternoon, my name's Seth Alexander, Mr. Chairman. We live at 144 Hayren Row, my wife and I purchased a house about two years ago, looking to raise a family. We're looking through and discussing curiosity of plans, as well as traffic, we've already have a big issue with traffic, having a hard time keeping a front fence up in our yard, just coming around the corner, people running through, so increased traffic is a big concern for the fam, you know, my family raising, coming that way, especially with that increased flow right there on that side.
Do you exit to sixty-one, or do you exit to Hayren Row?
Well, we, so, both.
Okay, so, but your, your home exits out to Hayren Row?
Our house is southeast residence right there, so, we would be directly diagonal, so it would be...
So, you're talking about coming out on Hayren Row, turning left, going out to sixty-one?
Yeah, taking off to get to that sixty-one.
Okay, please continue, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine, no, no, absolutely. So, that's one of our big concerns, excessive use of the streets, as noted in D, as well as C, not adverse effect to the property, so, you know, decreased usability, and I think it makes our property less desirable, having something of that nature next door to us on a very farm-related road, if you will, if you've ever been down Hayren Row, that's something that you don't expect to see when you buy something like that. As well as the twenty-five-foot buffer, I don't know that that's gonna be, you know, enough of a buffer for what, in, in my opinion, and that's, you know, obviously, I know we gotta go code-wise, but just, those are big concerns for us, having to deal with that, coming out on our front porch, and that being our viewpoint versus, you know...
So, you're, you're talking about a buffer that would essentially be across the road from you?
Right.
So, you've, you've mentioned concerns regarding tra, I'm sorry, I got started listening to try to figure out where you were, and then I got caught up with you. So, traffic concerns was one of your, your worries?
It's already dangerous as it is coming out of our driveway.
And then you listed depreciation of home values, and then a buffer, as far as visibility of the development from your home. Was there anything else that you mentioned in that that I may have missed?
And then, that was the first picture we'd ever seen of that, so that was just curiosity of being able to take a little gander there. But, um, yeah, so, you know, that was something that we were not aware of, as we went through the sixty-one expansion project, so, I know that that had talked about, that would be something in there that would have to address those sixty-one expansion, is that gonna make it, you know, come back even farther? So, you know, big concern to us is just safety, my family. We both work here, I run a physical therapy clinic in this town, and my wife's a veterinarian, and we just wanna take care of our family and raise them here, so...
Just for the record, and for everyone's edification, anytime you see a development or site plan that's been presented for, for Planning Commission, this is the idea or concept that the developer or the property owner is wishing to put in place, this is not necessarily going to be the final product, once, assuming it gets a favorable review from the Board of Commissioners, is afforded to plan review for their consideration, once they're ready to submit, this may not be the same animal, once it comes out.
Right, and that's our, that can be our concern as well.
Well, that's because it's gonna, well, again, you're gonna be dealing with professional staff from the county to try to make sure that they're safeguarding all, as many issues as they possibly can, so, I've got your comments, if you have anything more to add, you can, or you can take your seat.
That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak in opposition to this application, may have questions, comments, or concerns?
So, we certainly appreciate our neighbors being here, this, this property actually belongs to a family that's been a longtime property owner, as it was passed down, they are looking for also a, a good economic use for their property, in light of the fact that Highway sixty-one is being widened, and will continue to become more of a traverse route, if it's not already. I did wanna note that the primary points of access are on sixty-one, we will be coordinating with the DOT to make those improved to the level and the standard that the DOT and the county is required, and to really, you know, to make use of the fact that that road's being widened, to make access more easily accessible for the patrons, and then for the folks that are actually going along that corridor, so we think...
That's a state route, so they will also have to seek permit from the state, Georgia State Department of Transportation as well.
That's correct, and, and they're also going through a widening process, that will have its own requirements for, for developments along that corridor. So, being aware of that, and also being aware of the fact that there's also some existing commercial, and this is actually a water map, but there's an existing kind of aging gas station there at that intersection, and an aging townhome development, and this is an opportunity to kind of improve the quality of, of small-scale business development, retail development on this corridor, and kind of set the bar, we think, for something that really meets your overlay requirements. And so, we certainly wanna be a good neighbor, again, the primary access is focused along sixty-one, and we think a lot of those road improvements will help with some of the existing traffic, I think, that they're seeing. And it's an opportunity for these property owners to make good use of their property, so...
Well, if you will bear with me one moment, I'm gonna go to staff for just a moment.
Sure.
And, Mr. Jones, would you care to address the traffic concerns, or any comments that you may have?
Existing, there's five hundred ninety cars a day on Hayren Row Road in that section, Mr. Chairman.
Would you build that as a collector road as well, that is...
It's a, it's a local road, it's a local. Going back to the Highway sixty-one project, right now, it's on schedule for, I believe, March twenty-twenty construction date, but don't hold me to that, things change.
That's after ninety-two is done, right?
Well, no, it was before ninety-two is done, but yeah...
Some of you got the joke, I'm happy to...
I know, I know. I, I just chose to ignore it, that's all. But, the state, the sixty-one widening plans show a realigned Hayren Row Road, kinda cutting through the middle of this property, to line up with Vernoy Aiken, so, obviously, that's something that they would have to get in contact with GDOT about.
That would be significant.
Yes, and I, I have a drawing here, Mr. Chairman, that you could look at if you'd like.
I would love to see it, if you don't mind. Mr. Robinson, while we're looking at that, would you mind addressing any buffer requirements for the property as it relates to road frontage?
Well, the, the site is subject to highway corridor overlay district, which requires, on the, the highway overlay, on the, on the highway side, and since it's visible from the Hayren Row side, that, there would be landscaping plans for a four-foot strip along those two rightaways, as well as the required street tree, one for every thirty-five feet, this depends on the location, but that's a, a standard. The, in the rear, it's a twenty, twenty-five-foot buffer under rear ridge joints.
Between owners, commercial and residential?
Yes.
Where there's not a road dividing them?
That's correct, but there would be landscaping required along the two road frontages.
All right.
I'd like to ask the young lady if the developers would be amenable to possibly restricting the access to Hayren Row Road, and keeping the road, the access to Highway sixty-one, unless something else developed in that area that would promote the widening of Hayren Row?
I don't know that that would meet development requirements, in terms of, in terms of access, we haven't gotten that far through the, the planning process. So, I, I don't know that we can say that for sure now, especially with some of the, the road plans that are...
That's what they're gonna build right there.
Kind of ever-changing with the, with the state DOT. But, um, you know, it's certainly an option, depending on how the development comes to, comes to fruition. And I did want to note that the property owner to the rear of this property is actually the same owner that's selling this property, so they are, it is shared ownership.
While we have you there, if I, you, would it be, we have an interest from the gentleman who spoke, Mr. Alexander, about being able to look at the proposed development, and as I explained, this may not be the final version of what takes place, if it does go forward, but would you be objectionable, objectionable to him taking a look at that?
No, absolutely, we'd be happy to, to meet with him.
Furthermore, would you be able to have a conversation with him about, you know, he's wanting to preserve his quality of life as well?
Absolutely.
And seeing that out the front door might be, particularly looking at the backside of the development, it might be an eyesore, so, is that something that y'all could talk to him about, see if it's, y'all can come to some type of term?
We'd be happy to discuss, and we certainly plan on landscaping this, and making this, again, up to the, the overlay standard, if not higher, so, yeah, I'll be happy to meet with him.
If you'll put that back up under the camera, I think my question will be allevied by the changing of the road, it looks like you'll have, actually, property will be, will be split, and that question will probably go away with that section of Hayren Row being changed.
So, depending on how they decide to, to straighten out that intersection, or if they go forward with that, then yes, that would shift the development down sixty-one, and so we may, we could potentially lose that access, or it may cause the development to be shifted down.
'Cause there is a high accident factor in that area with vehicles turning left into Vernoy Aiken Road, so that, that's gonna leave a lot of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if you'll remain there, is there any other questions for the applicant? Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Avis.
Thank you.
So, in light of all that discussion, I will entertain a motion with regard to Application 2018-13-Z.
Make a motion for approval with the eleven stipulations?
Have a motion to approve with eleven, with the eleven listed stipulations from Mr. Leggett, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Mr. Stokes, all in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one, again, this will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners at seven o'clock. Applicant has to be present for it to be considered, and if you have an interest, please be there, and if you would, Mr. Alexander, if you'll give them to Ms. Avis after the meeting, y'all can have a conversation about your concerns. Mr. Robinson?
Next application, 2018-14Z, application by George Bueno, to rezon approximately six acres from R7 multifamily fee simple non-rental residential district, to B2 highway business for recreation vehicle parking lot and a chiropractic office. Property is located in Land Lots 537, 536, 544, and 543, District Two, Section Three, south, south side of Seven Hills Connector, east of Cedar Crest Boulevard, addresses 147 KDL's Place, it's in Commission Post Four. Staff has recommended approval with fourteen printed stipulations. This one, we've had a letter of opposition and concerns, which we've copied and have there in backup material. And the applicant is present.
The applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair in your presentation.
Good afternoon, my name is George Bueno, I live in Paulding County with my family, I'm also a chiropractor who practices in Paulding County, my office is in Cedar Crest Road, part of the... We also would like to create a parking lot that is able to store boats, RVs, or trailers of any sort. And so hence, we would like to create both of them, but in stages. First, we would like to create a parking lot, and in about a couple of years, go ahead and construct a chiropractic office in the same location. That's basically all I have for 14Z, because obviously it's for, the next one is also myself, so I don't know if I need to speak on that one or not.
We'll take them individually, if you don't mind.
Sure.
You're aware of the recommended 14 stipulations for the development?
I am. I do have some questions about that, specifically the, considering that there is no water and sewer on that property. I was wondering if, once we build, the chiropractic office would be acceptable to have actually a well or a septic tank on it?
That, I believe, is going to be dictated by the county's ordinances and regulations. So, Ms. Ashmore?
That is correct, and it is in the pumpkin vine mandatory sewer basis.
Okay. So the requirement for the stipulation being there comes out of the development regulations for Paulding County, which is not something that is circumvented at this level.
Okay.
So your intent, as I, as you just explained it, is to develop the parking area first?
Yes.
And then at a later date, the remaining development?
That is correct. Based on the stipulations that we have, in order for us to create, to bring water and sewer, that's going to take a little more of an investment, and the easiest way to open up some cash flow will be to open up the parking lot first, and then, as that occurs, build the office as we work on the stipulations, because there's a few of them that are going to be difficult in allocation.
And the, but you're going to engineer the entire site at this time?
Yes, that's correct. That's part of the plan right now. You can actually see the chiropractic office in the drawing with the parking lot adjacent to it.
All right. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant on this application? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you very much, sir. If you'll take your seat for a moment.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application, may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Chambers, members of the chamber, and Commissioner, my name's Justin Morse. I live at 136 Thomas Path, which is immediately off of Duval Way, which runs right off of Seven Hills Connector. We are adjacent to the properties, which Mr. Bueno was interested in purchasing and putting a parking lot. We have well water. We are concerned about the dripping and drainage off of anything that will be parked there. We are also on well water, so we are concerned about our well water being contaminated as well. Also, I mean, any type of, we've had, since Seven Hills Connector has been put in, we have had a lot more. We've had items that have been stolen. We've had more drug usage coming down into the cul-de-sac. And my brother has actually been shot at by somebody riding four-wheelers, cutting across Seven Hills onto our property. So we are highly concerned with more people trying to park over there and then finding somewhere to, even if they aren't parking a boat, if they're parking something else, another ATV or something, trying to come up on us as well. We all, my brother and I both have children that are young, and we're concerned for their safety.
You can continue until you're done. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Y'all say anything else?
If so, you'll still need to sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. Thank you. I'm sorry, ma'am, you said your name was Ms. Morse?
Jessica Morse.
Jessica Morse, I'm sorry.
M-O-R-S.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's James Thomas Jr. As my sister had stated, we've actually been on the same property since 1905. My great-grandfather purchased it. I actually live in the house at 50 Thomas Path that my grandmother was born in. So we've got a longstanding thing there. Our main concerns are, I have had to clean up drugs. I've had the cops called out to our location over 40 times in the last two to three years, verified via the records. I've been shot at. I've had people attempt to run me over in my own driveway. And I'm just, I'm concerned about any more people coming in, parking stuff randomly where it's not supposed to be parked as well.
Not to mention the people that are coming on our property are going to be going onto their property.
Need to let him continue to speak.
Yeah. There's above, adjacent across, there's people who have been building what looks to be four-wheeler tracks and all this. And coming down from that, we do have runoff from that. I've seen fires up in there and different things happen throughout the nights. And one of my huge concerns is, we've already nearly lost our property because of a fire that was caused by someone else once before. So anytime, anything that is highly flammable in the area, especially dealing with parked vehicles and all that, concerns us. There's also a little confusion about the two different things that we received, that one says special use permit for the same property as this one.
We'll be addressing this.
Okay.
SUV after this.
All right. Then that would be everything. Thank you very much for your time.
Ma'am, did you need to speak?
Good.
Thank you very much.
That's big for me.
All right. As I understand, and there's a lot of information imparted there, so I'm going to ask right now, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? There's still time remaining. Hearing none, if the applicant will please come back forward to the lectern. You heard what was presented by the opposition. I'm going to paraphrase it. What I understood it to mean is they're concerned about the security of the property, for one. Obviously, you can't do anything about adjacent properties or things that are happening outside of your area of control, but building a parking lot that may sit there for a few years, are you anticipating putting controls around it that will limit access to that that's unauthorized?
Well, it's going to be gated, number one. Now, to ease, and I understand where the concerns are coming from, but they also have to realize that in my, in order for us to have a peace of mind, we're also going to be living in the property. There is a house already in that property that more than likely we are going to move to, and we're going to be adjacent to the parking lot. It's not going to be a non-security, it's going to be a highly secured parking lot. And we're talking about also building a, you know, a pretty extensive chiropractic office in front of it, so people are not going to be looking and parking ATVs where they cannot park it. It's going to have to be permitted, self-sufficient, and there's no, you can't just drive in a private property. It is overall private.
You, you understand that moving forward, assuming that a favorable recommendation is passed to the Board of Commissioners and then they approve the application, that you would still have to go through plan review for development of the property?
Yes.
Which means they will address both stormwater runoff as well as pollution control, as is required under the state law, so.
It would address their concern also, the water, but the house that's already there has well water, and that's what we're going to be using, is well water. So we do not want to contaminate the same source of which they are drinking and we're going to be drinking. So there's going to be some safeguards to protect that.
Pointedly, I wanted to ask, are you then thereby planning to make sure whatever you put on the ground there is going to be environmentally compliant?
Absolutely.
Which you know will be required through plan review anyway. For you to get a permit, that's going to have to happen.
Correct. The only stipulation that I had is if it's going to be required to be asphalt or not. And we were hoping that it's not a requirement to make asphalt, that it will be acceptable to make it a gravel parking lot.
That may be where some of the concern would come from as far as oil leaking to the, the ground. You will have to make sure you're cleaning that up.
Correct.
Are there any questions for the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? Mr. Crowe?
Something we mentioned just now about would it be required to be asphalt or gravel? Is that what you was asking?
Yes, that is correct.
Chris?
As part of the stipulations, we're asking that it conform to the Highway Corridor Overlay District would require asphalt with the broken expanses with plantings and greenery.
It's funny enough, though, just as an anecdotal aside, the EPD likes permeable pavement, which is non-asphalt material, because you cut down on the requirement of having to have a detention or retention pond, depending on the grade of the property, and it's easier to clean. You can take off a top layer of polluted soil and put down an additional layer of gravel, so it's not a bad thing in essence as far as the state is required, but if the corridor overlay district is going to require asphalt, your question's answered. But they, the EPD does like permeable pavement or permeable.
That was, that was my thought. The more asphalt, the more runoff, whether it be rainwater.
The more asphalt, the larger the pond is going to have to be to
That's correct.
Contain the property, the water.
That was, that was the reason I was asking that.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners?
I have a question.
Mr. Low?
Yeah. Would the construction of a parking lot require a building permit?
It would require, well, is it, depends if it's over one, well, I'll turn that over to Chris, I guess, and then to the DOT. Maybe not.
You're asking if it requires a
Building permit.
A building permit. Actually, it wouldn't technically be a building permit for the, for the parking area. They would have to submit engineered civil plans, with the grading plans, showing their stormwater runoff, landscape plans, everything. And that would have to be approved through land disturbance permits before they start moving any dirt or anything out there.
More specifically, what I'm wondering is, would it, would the construction of that parking lot bring stipulation number 10 into effect? Which is the requirement that he can't do anything until the county gets their sewer stuff built.
That is a good question that I would have to refer back, I guess, to the water system.
And I would say if, if there was no building permit required, it would not call in to that stipulation. And now, so it would actually do exactly what he is in, what he has asked in terms of, he would need it at the time he did his office.
Right.
So to do
So I guess what I, where I was going is, would it be possible to change that language to the same language that we did on stipulation 14 for 2018-12Z?
And that is acceptable.
So he would be required to have a land disturbance permit initially, depending on the size and scope of what
Size and scope, it just depends on this, six acres.
But regardless, he's going to have to have a set of civil, civil engineering plans.
Civil plan review, correct. And I can go ahead and clarify the two applications. This type of use, not the, not the proposed chiropractic office, but the actual commercial storage boat camper RV parking area is not a permitted use in a B2 district. So he's asking to rezone to B2, which would allow the chiropractic office, but not the parking lot unless he now applies for the second application, which is a special use permit for the storage parking area.
Okay. Well, let's, let's handle this one then first, and then we'll roll into the SUV.
Okay. My question also, Chris, is there going to be lighting required on this parking area?
Yeah, that was a question I thought might come up on the other storage, but they have to have, under the highway overlay, a box shielded lighting. There's a limitation on the heights, and it's mainly to focus the light down and not
Reduce any light.
Not reduce security of the site, but not to spill over on neighbors' properties.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the applicant from the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners regarding this application? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2018-14-Z.
Motion to approve.
With?
With modifications to stipulation 10.
But with all 14 stipulations? I don't want to put words in her mouth.
Sorry? Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve from Mr. Low with all 14 listed stipulations with modification using the same language from before to stipulation 10. And do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Battle, all in favor. Motion passes four, zero, and one. And Mr. Bueno, if you could step aside for just a moment, but don't go back to your seat. Mr. Robinson will introduce the next application.
As just discussed, this is the second part of it, the second application, which is a special use permit, and it would be for the, the parking area. It's 2018-04 SUP application by George Bueno for a special use permit on approximately six acres for recreation vehicle parking lot. Property is located in land lots 537, 536, 544, 543, District 3, Section 3, south side of Seven Hills Connector, east of Cedar Crest Boulevard, 147 K. L.'s Place, Commission Post 4. And staff has recommended if you approve the SUP, that you include the 14 printed stipulations.
And Mr. Bueno, if you would please take the stand again. And you can introduce this application as to what your intent is. I think you've already alluded to it in the previous conversation, but just for formality's sake.
Yes, sir. My name is George Bueno. We're applying for rezoning so that we can use six acres, so that we can use it as a parking lot to store boats, recreational vehicles, and RVs.
And you're familiar with the 14 listed stipulations and agreeable to this?
I am, however, I, like was stated earlier, I do not believe that all of the stipulations apply to this particular building. It only applies to the building of the chiropractic office.
Good.
I do have a question, which I think Chris alluded to, is the fact that you both mentioned that one is going to be required asphalt, and the other, you stated that it could be better suited if we have a different type of soil. I would like to, if it'll possible, have that answered, because it's going to make a big difference as to how we proceed.
Right now, your answer is you will comply with the corridor overlay district, which requires an asphalted parking lot.
Okay.
The discussion previously was talking about whether or not a permeable parking solution is a good one, and threw that out, just based on what the state's recommendations are. It has nothing to do with the corridor overlay requirements.
Thank you.
Question for you. Are you intent on having this storage on your parking lot even after you have opened your chiropractic care?
Yes, sir.
So your intent is to run both businesses concurrently off that property?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant regarding this application from Planning Board of Commissioners? Thank you, sir. If you'll take your seat for a moment.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to this application, may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none at this time, I will entertain a motion for application 2018-04-SUP.
I recommend we approve it with 14 listed stipulations.
And Ms. Skipper, should we go ahead and amend the same?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so with the amended language?
With the amended language, yes.
Second?
I have a, that's an approval from Mr. Stokes and a second from Mr. Lowe. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. Again, both these applications will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners. An applicant must be present for it to be considered, and anybody having a vested interest in it should be present as well. Mr. Robinson?
The last application for today, 2018-17Z, application by Will C. Lawrence to rezon approximately one acre from B1 general business to R2 suburban residential for residential construction purposes. Property is located in landlot 1249, District 3, Section 3, north side of Chester Harris Drive, west of Dallas-Ackworth Highway, and address of the site is 118 Chester Harris Drive, it's in Commission Post 4. Staff has recommended approval with one stipulation, and we have noted two calls, visits with opposition, and open records request on the file, and that can is present.
The applicant, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Hello, Chair. I'm Will C. Lawrence. Just here to apply to get this piece of property zoned back to residential where it should have been for the last 15 years, according to everyone. I don't know what else to say.
All right. Are you familiar with the listed stipulation recommended by staff and agreeable to it?
Was it five feet? I gotta give him five feet of road frontage. Is that what it was?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, whatever it takes.
Is there any questions for the applicant?
Your intent is to do what, Will?
Get out from under it. Whatever it takes. It's worthless right now. I'm trying to make it not worthless.
I understand.
Yeah. Yeah. Essentially, it's not, it's B1 right now, and you can't put anything there, because you gotta have so much room from one side to the other. That leaves a 20-foot space in the middle to put anything at all. And it's already been turned down to zone to where I could park garbage trucks on it. So if it's zoned residential, it's actually worth close to what I got in it, instead of nothing.
You're simply wanting to make the property available where you can move and get your money back.
Yeah, yeah, where it's not worth nothing anymore, essentially.
Are there any more questions for the applicant from the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to this application, may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Paymane Sadi.
I'm gonna beg your forgiveness and ask you to repeat that.
All right, so.
I'm sorry, could you state your name for me again, please?
Yes, my name is Paymane Sadi. And my husband and I own the house that's directly next to 118 Chester Harris. We are not opposed to the rezoning if it's gonna be a residential. In fact, we are using our house as a residential property. However, my concern is that the real intent of rezoning might be for our neighbors to be able to park garbage trucks on the lot. And this is a real concern, because our house is just a few feet away from where the parking, where the trucks will be parked. And I did some research, and according to several studies, the organic waste, so basically the trash, is gonna be serious health and environmental hazard. There's other families living a few feet away from the lot, and basically there's young children that play in the backyard, and if they put garbage trucks on the lot, it's gonna be in our backyard. So my main concern then is the odor that comes from the garbage if they are put on this lot. And again, I don't know what the intent is, but my concern is that, obviously, the odor is bacteria. Bacteria is transported to other parts of the neighborhood by rodents, by rats, cockroaches, flies, mosquitoes, worms, and so this is a real health issue, or health hazard, if they put the trucks on the lot. So I'm asking that if the rezoning to residential is approved, that there is a provision that will guarantee that the garbage trucks will not be put on the lot. That's really my only request.
All right. Before we go any further, Mr. Robinson? With this property being rezoned back to R2, which is suburban residential, is there any provision within that zoning regulation, that zoning classification, that would allow the use that is the concern of previous speaker?
Under the R2 district, which is pretty much the remaining area of that location, the street there, you can have home-based business, but you're limited to a one-ton carrying capacity, which would not allow anything over that one-ton capacity. So you could not have a garbage truck parked out there. And that would be for any R2 district.
Thank you. Please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Chris Earnhardt. I own this piece of property right here. Mr. Lawrence and I share a line, my south line and his north line. Own about eight acres there, and I forgot we were on YouTube last time when I started doing this, and I wasn't real crazy about how this looked, so I'm gonna try to keep my head up a little bit. So I own about eight acres adjacent to the property that Mr. Lawrence is requesting to have rezoned. I don't have an issue with the downzoning on its face. My concern lies in some of the comments that I've seen and heard. I'm not concerned with the zoning. My concern is with the land use. I hope that I am being paranoid about this, but it would appear there could be other things in play, and I'll get to that in just a moment. I would prefer to be on the safe side and state my concerns, as this is my land, and my house is here as well. This is likely the biggest investment of my life, and I feel compelled to protect it and oppose anything that would devalue my land or my property. So a couple of things to share where my concerns are coming from. In the last meeting, Mr. Lawrence stated that he parked his trucks 100 feet from his front door when he owned land on Electric Dam Road. I can't find, and I'm not a land title researcher or anything like that, but I can't find any time that that land was zoned B2. I believe it was residential, possibly agricultural, but he was using that zoning to park his commercial vehicles on. It was more than one vehicle and over a ton, which I believe is the regulation for a home-based business that's zoned residential. He started using the property on Chester Harris before the B2, as B2, before the business was properly zoned and the necessary requirements were fulfilled. In the last meeting, I also brought up the fact that the land on Chester Harris that's in question, all the trees and brush, everything that was cleared, was pushed down the hill onto my property, or towards my property, not on my property, towards it. Mr. Lawrence was advised that that was out of compliance, said he had every intention to clean up the mess, but the mess remains now. Although the current situation does restrict Mr. Lawrence from using the property as B2, it does not restrict him from cleaning up the existing out-of-compliance items. Lastly, and this is a question, kinda getting back to what we were talking to a moment ago, sorry, but Mr. Robinson spoke to it, and I just need clarification. There was a truck route requirement on the last meeting that got updated, basically saying that, and this is the part that I don't understand, it included a provision that would allow commercial vehicles on roads that would otherwise restrict commercial vehicles if you parked, if your parking was on that road. So I would like a little bit of clarification on that. So the land use permit is where my concern lies, not necessarily the zoning. From past practice, I guess, there was commercial vehicles parking on a residential lot, and that was, I guess, allowed to happen. Again, I hope this isn't a maneuver to have the requirements renegotiated or removed, and I honestly believe the downzoning will be approved. I do, however, want to be on the record as being opposed to any workaround to having zoning approved to any business that will negatively impact my land. I would like to request a stipulation to be added on this zoning, if it does get approved, to clean up the trees and the brush that were cleared on the initial zoning for B2. And as it's been stated a couple times in this meeting already, all that we're trying to do, all that I'm trying to do, is protect my quality of life as well. And I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
If you would please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission and Commissioners, my name is Mike Fuller. I own the property right over here that joins Mr. Lawrence's property. I had a nice big speech prepared, but I'm gonna cut to the chase, because this is getting kinda long of tooth. This is what Mr. Lawrence wants to do with this lot, and you can see there's houses all around there. The only thing we're afraid of is that he's using this as a back door to park these trucks on that lot. We have no opposition. Most of us in the neighborhood have got together. If he wants to use this as a residential property, that's great. If Mr. Lawrence, if what he really wants is to use this property as residential, then what we'd like to see is that there's a stipulation placed on here, because he can go ahead and get variances later on. We need a stipulation that says that no commercial vehicles will be placed on this lot, will be permitted on this lot contingent upon this application. And if that's, if he'll agree to that, if that's what he, if he really wants to just sell this residential and be done with it, then he should have no problem accepting that stipulation. If he doesn't, then we all know what he's trying to do, and look just like this. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Is that a, is that a real photograph?
No, no, it's from a shot.
If you'd sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is DeJuan Vallejo. I'm the owner of 112 Chester Harris, and my concern is I just recently bought this property. It was, like, in a really bad condition. There was trash everywhere, and I bought it in. We actually cleaned it out, and we're doing some remodeling. So my goal is to either rent it out or resell the property. But I just wanna make sure that there's no, any concerns that Mr. Will Lawrence will put any trash cans, oh, trash trucks in there, because it's gonna, it's gonna get down in the value of the house. And like the neighbors just stated, I just wanna make sure that none of that is gonna happen. I don't mind the rezoning, but I just wanna make sure that that's not gonna happen. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? There's about four minutes remaining. Hearing none. Mr. Robinson?
I just wanted to make a comment. You know, our focus is, is this a good use for the property, R2 district? The R2 district allows home-based businesses, but not for multiple truck parking over a ton. It only allows for one commercial vehicle of a ton or less. If someone has violated that, it's handled through planning and something in the marshals.
In other words, if?
Any changes or variances is not possible to that. The zoning board of appeals does not have that power to change that use.
Who does?
They would have to come back through the zoning board, which is the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners.
And the final arbiter of that decision is?
The Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
So I wanted to try and clear.
So you're saying that only one commercial vehicle?
I hear a lot of emotion and passion in this, and I just wanna let everybody know that. Even if he builds a house out there, if it's rezoned and parks trucks, there's mechanisms to handle that.
Is there any other zoning outside of R2 in your mind, and I'm asking your opinion as staff and a professional in this industry, that would have been more relevant to this topic than going from B2 down to R2?
It would have to be going back to the R2, I mean, the B2 district with a special use permit, which was a prior application, which this board heard, and before it became considered to the Board of Commissioners, the applicant withdrew.
So if it was brought up as a home-based business, that would still have to be permitted also?
Home-based business would have to come in and have zoning approval through staff and the Business License Department.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
This is my, thank you.
At this point, just so that we can alleviate any conversation regarding what the intended use for its resident, R2, which is suburban residential, typically intended for building a home, people residing in it. But at this point, are there any questions from the Planning Commission to the staff regarding this topic? Board of Commissioners to the staff, any questions that you may have? And I know, Mr. Crowe, you asked a question earlier that I thought kinda answered most of the other questions that came up, but do you have any further things that y'all would like to add?
Not the staff, no.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence, would you please come back to the lectern? You've already stated that you have no intent, or don't let me put words in your mouth, you have no intent to park trucks on this property. Is that the case?
That is correct.
Your intent is to try to divest yourself from this property so that you can acquire the money that you've already invested in the purchase of this property. Is that what you stated earlier?
That is correct. I do not intend to maintain a home-based business. I intend to change to a commercial business and be in a different location altogether.
I'm compelled to ask you two questions with regarding to requested stipulations during the conversation of those that were speaking in opposition or had questions, comments, or concerns.
Okay.
As far as adding a stipulation for cleanup of trees and brush on the property, are you objectionable to that proposal?
I've already invested a lot of money in this, and I really, I mean, I can say this, and I don't wanna talk too much about what my plans are, but if it changes hands, it'll be definitely cleaned up, probably some houses built on it, or a house or something. I'm just guessing.
And then there was a stipulation requested that no commercial vehicle be placed on the lot.
You can't clear a lot. You can't build a house without commercial vehicles on it. Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying about parking overnight, leaving them there or nothing, but.
I understand.
You gotta have them there to build a house, clear a lot, or clean the brush up.
There any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? There any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Or from the Planning Commission to the applicant, strike that, reverse it. Board of Commissioners?
You have a good point, it's hard to build a house without commercial vehicles on there. Your intent is to zone this thing back, to sell it.
I want to get rid of it. I don't want to have nothing to do with nothing down there.
I got you.
I promise.
You may have some players right here.
I doubt it.
All right. But anyhow.
Figure out some industrial land.
You pretty well, you pretty well explain yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2018-17-Z.
Motion to approve with one stipulation.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Lowe with the one listed stipulation. I have a second from Mr. Leggett, all in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. At this time, I will ask, Mr. Robinson, is there any further business that we need to consider?
Just wanted to remind everyone that the next Planning Commission meeting, which is approved, been scheduled by both of the Board of Commissioners, is November the 27th.
Thank you very much.
And that's the Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
Thank y'all. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I can motion adjourn.
A motion to adjourn from Mr. Leggett the second by Mr. Lowe, all in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one.